I'd like to welcome you all to the September 17th, 2013 Vista Planning Commission Meeting. We've got a large audience tonight. I really appreciate your presence. One favor to ask, please mute your cellphones. I would appreciate that very much. Thank you. Commissioner Valdez, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to be held by the United States of America. The Republic of Washington, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Charlie, could you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Carroll.
Here.
Chairman Kramer.
Here.
Commissioner Fleming.
Here.
Commissioner Garretson.
Present.
Commissioner Jackal. Commissioner Rosler. Commissioner Valdez.
Here.
Student Commissioner Sanchez. And Student Commissioner Vivier.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Charlie. Now for the approval of the minutes from the August 20th meeting. Are there any changes to be made, or if not, do I hear of a motion? Commissioner Jackal. Thank you. Please cast your vote. Let the record show that all commissioners voted yes, with the exception of Mr. Garretson, who abstained. Thank you. Mr. Connolly or Ms. Chow, are there any agenda changes this evening?
No agenda changes tonight, Chairman Kramer. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now is the time for oral communications for anything that is not on this evening's agenda. So if there's something that you would like to speak to us about that is not on tonight's agenda, you need to fill out a speaker slip. Seeing none, we will proceed. Ms. Chow, we have swearing-in of new commissioners?
Yes, that's true. Chairman Kramer, I would like to request Commissioner Garretson and Student Commissioners Sanchez and Vivier to meet me at the podium, please. If you could please raise your right hand and state your names individually, and I would like to ask you to read the statement collectively. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
I, Gary Garretson.
I, Michael Vivier.
I, Ramon Sanchez.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic; that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California; that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion; that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Okay, before us this evening, we've got two public hearings and one discussion item. On the public hearings, again, we have speaker slips. If you would like to address the commission, please fill out a speaker slip. And how the process will go is that staff will make a presentation, and at that point, then, the commission will have an opportunity to ask questions of staff. The applicant may or may not, but also make a presentation to us. We, as the commission, will ask questions if we have some of the staff. Then we will open it up as a public hearing, which, at that time, will give you the opportunity to address us, and we'll try to get your questions answered. And then, we'll close the public hearing, and the commission will make a decision on the item. Each person that speaks will be allotted a three-minute timeframe to speak. So with that, we'll start. First item is PC-8245 Family Dollar, and this is continued from our last meeting. Mr. Connolly?
Thank you. John Connolly, Community Development Director. This is a project that was continued from the last meeting, as the chairman just identified. This is a request for a special use permit for a bargain basement store within an existing commercial center at 943 East Vista Way. The project site is zoned commercial. It's C1. It's in a commercial district that's surrounded by similar zoning with residential further north and south, as shown on the zoning map. The project location is at 943 East Vista Way. It's within a commercial center that contains several suites. The actual location of the proposed store would be 9,974 square feet within the total center, which is just under 60,000 square feet for all the space included. The site's surrounded by commercial uses to the north and west and south, a church immediately to the east, as well as some other commercial and office professional uses, and the Vista Community Clinic to the southeast. This shows the general location of the Family Dollar suite within the tenant space in the center. The site provides access from driveways along all of the street frontages on East Vista Way, Vale Terrace, and Williamson. There are 32-foot-wide driveways and drive-aisles through the site, as well as all the necessary parking for the retail use of the space. This is the floor plan. Just generally shows a general retail layout, racking system, consistent with the type of sales that they provide, as well as some office space and storage space in the rear of the suite. Some existing site photos of the center and the existing signage and location within the center. Some history. The city council adopted an ordinance requiring a special use permit within the commercial zones for a range of stores or uses in 2009, which included bargain basement store category. A bargain basement store is defined essentially as any store where the majority of merchandise is at or below $5, or that merchandise at or below $5 occupies at least a half of the floor space that's devoted to retail sales. It also covers some used merchandise, and there are further clarifications within the definition, which I can get into if the commission would like. Family Dollar submitted building plans for tenant improvements and signage for the space in late 2012. At the time of the application, the staff identified that we had the bargain basement ordinance in place and requested some documentation that they did not fall within that category. They provided a letter at that time indicating that they did not, and we took in their TI and issued them a building permit. At the time that they requested occupancy, we requested additional information to verify the fact that they were not a bargain basement, which, upon them providing, we determined that they did fall under that category and identified that they required a special use permit. The store opened in February, and they applied for the use permit concurrently once they had found out that they required the use permit. And so, we process it now, and are in front of the planning commission for approval of that request. The staff has to make three findings for the special use permit, or the planning commission has to make those upon staff's recommendation. Those are that the uses will contribute to the general convenience or welfare of the surrounding community, that the activity is in harmony with the general plan and the elements and objectives of that plan, and that it won't be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of those in the vicinity of the site. Based on staff's review, the Family Dollar use occupies prior vacant commercial space within the center, which has resulted in general improvement to the center and the commercial area. They sell a range of commercial retail products similar to those uses around them. We haven't identified any problems or complaints with respect to their use or their operation from code enforcement or any of the neighbors. And we've included a range of conditions that address their operation, including store hours, a restriction on alcohol sales in the future, limitations on the signage that they currently have, as well as maintenance of the site. And so, based on that, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve a special use permit for a bargain basement store at 943 East Vista Way. That concludes my staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Do you have any questions with staff? Commissioner Jackal?
The question was if there were a maximum number of bargain basement stores that were adopted by the council, and no, there was not. There was simply the requirement for a use permit, but we've never had a defined cap on the number of stores that could be permitted within the city.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other questions from the commission, let's see. Christopher Moore, which is the applicant?
Good evening. My name is Christopher Moore. I'm a real estate manager for Family Dollar Stores in Southern California. Family Dollar is a discount variety retailer. We operate approximately 8,000 stores nationwide, including the store on East Vista Way here in Vista. I'm here this evening to answer any questions you might have or provide any additional information that you desire.
Commissioner Rosler?
What happened last month?
We had a company convention in Florida, so I was in Orlando. This isn't, as a real estate manager, this isn't the sort of issue that I normally get involved in, but I'm here to represent the company this evening.
Okay. Is shoplifting a problem in your stores? I was surprised when I visited your store that there was an announcement, both in English and, I believe, in Spanish, asking if people saw something to say something to the manager. And that's the first time I've ever heard something like that in a retail store.
Shoplifting is a problem for all retailers. For us, we do everything we can to control it, because any time you have theft from your store, it hits your bottom line. We contract with a third-party vendor who places cameras and microphones in our stores. The stores are monitored at a different location to watch for suspicious activity.
Okay. And what happened between your first letter to the city before you submitted your tenant improvements? You had to know the floor area of your merchandise and what was going to sell for $5, and what changed?
I can't speak to that specifically. The application process was handled by an attorney based in our North Carolina headquarters.
Okay, all right. Thank you, ma'am. Chairman?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Moore. All right, well, we have no other speaker slips, so seeing none, we have some comments from the commission. Someone want to make a motion? Is that for the second item? Yeah, just, yeah, fill out a speaker slip. You can get those in the front, and then turn them in to Ms. Charlie at the end, right here? See if we got a speaker here. Numbered, no? Okay, all right. Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. I think the store is appropriate for the location, and the, I don't know how close it was to meeting the $5 criteria, but it's really here nor there to me. When I went in the store, it was well-kept and clean on the outside and inside. And I think the, whatever the reason the applicant had for not initially following through with the special use permit is maybe just trying, hoping not to do it. I mean, we're just, I think, rectifying that initial oversight or wishful oversight.
Thank you. Commissioner Rosler?
I agree with Commissioner Carroll. When I visited the store, everything seemed to be clean and well-managed. I guess the tough question for staff, then, is what happens if we don't approve this for some reason? They're already up and open and operating. What kind of problems do we get into at that point?
I'm assuming if the special use permit is not approved this evening, then the applicant has the right to appeal it to the city council?
Right.
And so, the city council would then hear the application, and if it did not successfully make it through that, then they would have, the only remedy they would have would be a lawsuit.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Commissioner Fleming?
Thank you. I agree with what's been said so far. It seems like a clean location, a clean store for that location. If there's no other discussion, I'd just make a motion to approve a special use permit,
Commissioner Carroll?
I'll second the motion.
Please vote. Let the record show that the item passes unanimously? Okay, our next item on this evening's agenda is PC-2104 Anna Lane subdivision. Mr. Connolly?
Thank you, Chairman. This is a request for a tentative subdivision map within the R1 zone at 1874 Anna Lane. The subdivision would create five residential lots, one private drainage lot, and one private street lot. The location of the site is at the south end of Anna Lane, just south of Woodland Drive, in the extreme eastern portion of the city limits. You can note in the zoning map that's on the screen, the boundary of the city extends along the northern and eastern boundary of the site, so the properties north and east of this site are within the county, outside the city's jurisdiction. To the south is the North County Square specific plan, where Walmart and a number of retail stores are located. And directly to the west is a small-lot, single-family zoning. The project site consists of about 1.86 acres. It's located in a residential area, with the exception of the North County Square development to the south. There's currently a private roadway about 20 to 24 feet wide that extends through the site that provides access to some residences directly to the east. There's also a current right-of-way north of the site that's shown, a bulbout area right-of-way, a portion of which would be vacated with the project. The site is undeveloped, has no permit history. It's largely been disturbed, so there's no native habitat. And so, there's no real significant environmental issues other than one that I will mention as we move through the application here. The tentative subdivision map is what was submitted by the applicant, shows the general parcel layout of the site. This is the full-page map that was provided to all of the commissioners in their packet. This is a blow-up of the actual subdivision layout. As you can see, the subdivision would create five residential lots, ranging from about 10,000 square feet up to just a little over 11,000 square feet. Access would be provided via a private street that extends through the site, generally following the location of the current private street. It would be slightly relocated, 24 feet wide within a 40-foot public easement, would provide access to all of the lots, with the exception of Lot 2, which is shown in the upper right-hand corner. That'd be the northeast corner, which would be served by a private driveway that serves an adjacent residence over which they have an access easement, the applicant. There's also significant drainage improvements shown, which are to the west of the private street, shown as Lot A. That would be a large detention basin to accommodate off-site drainage that enters into the site, as well as a smaller onsite basin to address the increase in drainage that's created as a result of the subdivision. I'll give you a little more detail on that as well. The staff review of a subdivision map generally focuses on zoning standards that are fairly straightforward. Minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet. There are private street standards that they may have to follow. Within this case, the lots qualify as meeting a semi-rural standard based on the low volume of traffic in that area and the residential use of the street. And so, a 24-foot-wide paved street is the maximum that's required. All of the lots meet the minimum design standards that are in our code for lot depth and width, and the setbacks for future development of the homes on the site are shown on the map, which would accommodate a single-family residence per zone. I mentioned there's a significant drainage basin shown on the map, and that's the result of an existing drainage condition that was created by development of the North County Square Commercial Center. The design engineer's review showed that the facilities put in with North County Square couldn't fully accommodate a 100-year flow that enters into the site. So, by default, the site sort of serves as a detention basin because of its low topography and its undeveloped nature. So, the applicant actually had to set land aside to address that condition, and they did, in the form of a large detention basin. So, they are providing a benefit to the city overall as well with their project design. In the environmental review process, it was identified that there is some potential for cultural resources on the site that could be buried on the site and were not easily visible during the survey of the property. This was based on evidence that we found when the adjacent commercial center was developed. So, there was a review done. There were some recommended conditions to follow for construction. They weren't included in your original packets, so they were placed on the day as for your review. Staff's recommending that those be included. It's generally a requirement for an agreement with the local tribe to make sure that there's a monitor, as well as some cultural resource monitoring during grading activities. The site is consistent with the general plan designation of medium-low-density residential and complies with the same goals and policies within the plan, as well as the R1 zone. And the city engineer reviewed the map to make sure that all of the available utilities and services could be accommodated on the site. Based on the staff's review, we're recommending approval of a tentative subdivision map on Anna Lane for five single-family lots, one private drainage lot, and one private street lot, with the additional conditions that were included. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Connolly, I assume the 24-foot approved width is a no-parking situation. Is that in the conditions, or is that based on the city's standard section for that with-road?
I can't guarantee it's in the conditions. It may be in the land development conditions, but the city standards require that the fire department maintain a 24-foot clear fire-access road, which is what is provided in the design.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see it in the conditions, but...
So, no parking is allowed on the street, if that's your question?
Yeah, so I would be possibly looking to just maybe add some language in the conditions to clarify that, but on the vacation right-of-way portion where the cul-de-sac shape is, who's getting the ownership of that property?
The vacation process generally splits the property between the adjacent ownership. So, the portion on the south side of the circle would go to this property owner. On the north side of the circle would go to the other adjacent property owner.
Okay, but isn't that also the city boundary?
That's correct, and that's an issue that we're going to have to resolve as part of the vacation process. We may opt to leave that right-of-way in place within the county and adjust it on the city side, because they're going to be doing public improvements within that right-of-way area. Or, we could leave it in place and allow for an encroachment agreement, but in concept, the purpose for the bulb is to accommodate a turnaround that's no longer necessary, and so, the design encroaches into that right-of-way area.
Okay, yeah, I can see the need for going into that area, but there's also that fire truck turnaround, so I'm assuming then the vacation would exclude out the area needed for the fire truck turnaround?
That's correct. The fire truck turnaround is also provided by the private driveway that runs to the east there above Lot 1. So, there's enough of a T turnaround there that the fire department approved, which allowed them to vacate that bulb.
Okay, good. Was there any information or discussion brought up about, in the processing of the project, regarding the adjacent lots to the east of Lots 2 and 3? I'm assuming, those being in the county, I'm assuming they're on septic, and kind of looking at an impact, possible impact of the cut slope on Lot 2 to the existing septic system for that easterly lot?
That is an excellent issue. We did provide the map to the county. They generally don't come on subdivisions.
Yeah, I know. It's something that really doesn't look at this stage, but...
It would definitely be an issue that would need to be evaluated prior to issuance of a grading permit, and I think that would be something that would be valuable to add as a condition as well.
Yeah, I can see that it might come up, but they could just move the slope if they had to, I guess, if there was an issue. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Rosler?
John, I'm assuming that because it's a private street in the R1 zone in the semi-rural area, that that's why we don't have sidewalks in this 10,000-square-foot lot subdivision?
The general rural standard doesn't require a sidewalk.
Okay.
That's typically because the infill nature of projects in areas where there are no sidewalks. This is a similar condition.
Okay.
It's certainly within the purview of the commission to apply a sidewalk or ask for one, if that's what you'd like to see, but there aren't any connections to a sidewalk north of the site. So, that's, the staff didn't ask for it. It's part of the staff review.
Okay. And then, the retaining wall on Lot 2? Does staff feel that that's necessary for a development area of Lot 2?
I guess we don't necessarily... I guess we don't necessarily get to decide what's necessary. You know, our, our perspective is that it's under fi- it's five feet or less, which we generally don't object to. If it's over five feet, then we typically try to have it be a planable wall. We allow typically up to ten feet before it has to be benched or separated. In this condition, it's in the rear portion of the lot. It really wouldn't be visible if a home was built on the lot. And so we don't have any adverse opinion on the wall. Thank you.
Uh, Philip Bukola, the applicant, please? Please state your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Phil Bukola. My address is thirty-one forty-two Vista Way in Oceanside. And, excuse me, I'm the civil engineer on the project and also the representative of the owner. I want to thank, uh, staff for making a very complete presentation. Doesn't leave much for me to add. So, um, we have reviewed the conditions of approval, and, um, we accept all of the conditions as written. And, uh, we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, you heard my question about the, uh, septic system on the easterly lot. Do you have any information on what's going on there?
I do not have any information at this time. That's something we will have to investigate, uh, prior to a grading permit.
Okay, um... Maybe this is more for, uh, Mr. Connolly, a question. Has there been any interest from these easterly lots in annexation to the city? I see the sewer is getting close there, and I'm assuming that would be the major obstacle to them annexing if they needed to or wanted to due to septic issues or, uh, just desires?
Uh, we haven't received any indication from the properties to the east in the interest of annexation, that this area was annexed around the time that the North County Square property was annexed. And we haven't seen any, uh, recent annexation activity in that area.
Just, just curious, not a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bukola. I have one other, um, speaker slip from Janice Hadfield Eggy. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Janice Hadfield Eggy, and I'm at nineteen sixty-four Anna Lane. And my property buds up next to Lot Two. And no, that's not on, um, septic. Um, I just, uh, feel that five homes in this area is way too many homes for that area. It doesn't fit up with our, uh, subdivision there. And, uh, when I brought my property, they said two to three homes would be placed on there, which seems like reasonable, um, homes. Also, my property has already been devalued by the sprinter going in, the horns honking, the bells honking. Now we have this, uh, multi-subdivision here going in, so I'm very upset about this. I don't feel that, um, that many homes should be placed in there. Um, another thing that hasn't been, um, tested is the North County Square has a wall up there. And that wall up there prevents anything that's coming from those other homes. Smoke, whether it's noise, barbecues, or anything, it, it's like a bowl in there. So everything sits down in there. Even the fog in the morning sits down in there. So everything comes up, um, and it comes up right in my yard. So any kind of breeze, all the breezes go up there. So I have an issue. Five homes are going in there, five chimneys are going in there. Where's that smoke gonna go? It's gonna go in my yard, and it's gonna go through my home. And my son and I both have asthma. So nobody's checked that out because it, that wall is just like a bowl right there. Same thing with the sound, any, any kind of sounds in there. It echoes right out there. I'm level with it. So any sound that goes in there bounces right back to my home. So nobody's, uh, said anything about that. We got five homes. We could have five dogs barking down there. And I've already got five on the hill barking that nobody's done anything about because it's allowed. You can have up to five dogs. So that could be anywhere from five to twenty-five dogs. I gotta listen to ten times the sound. It reflects off of that wall. So, um, you know, I'm really concerned about that. Also, if you put in, um, which I'm assuming because they're, they're being crammed in there, that they're gonna be, uh, two-story homes. I do not really want somebody looking in my backyard. I have a private backyard. I bought it because it's nice and quiet up there. And I really don't want a two-story home going in so somebody can be looking in my backyard. If I wanna go out in the morning in my PJs and water my plants, I don't want somebody be looking through the window. Not that they really wanna be looking at me, but I really don't want that kind of home next to mine. I purposely bought it because it was secluded up there. The other issue is the road. People park on that road down there. We always have to swerve around them. So whoever's thinking that nobody's gonna be parking on there, they're parking on there right now. So it's making it a one lane. So that road is an issue too for traffic. And I don't know because none of, none of us got copies of what's going on, where the road's gonna go or anything. We just got one letter in the mail saying there was gonna be a meeting, so none of us know. So I may be complaining about things that, um, really don't affect me, because of, we don't know. Nobody's, um, given us anything, showed plans to show where the homes are, where the road's gonna run. Another thing is the dust and the noise that I'm gonna have to deal with for a long time, for five homes. That's, that's a lot. I'm gonna get the brunt of everything, so, um, I just wanted to express, uh, myself on that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Eggy. Uh, Commissioner Carroll?
Oh, I think that's a leftover request, sorry.
Okay. Commissioner Fleming?
Uh, yeah, John, could you address that, uh, the concerns she had of the wall and the circulation of the air and the smoke? And is it, is there anything to that that you know of?
Uh, with respect to the smoke from the homes that could be built there?
The smoke, there, there's a wall there that, that creates a petition of some kind, and there's a...
There is a large slope behind the property and a, a large wall to screen the commercial use of the North County Square Shopping Center from the residential area.
But there should be no additional problem with people's smoke stacks or anything like that that would create... Do you know of any, any concerns of that, of along those lines?
With respect to air pollution and the air pollution that's created by the chimneys from the homes that are built there, that's under the jurisdiction of the county Air Pollution Control District. They make the rules as to whether or not someone can have a wood-burning fire in their home.
But you don't know of any reason that this would not be okay, is what I'm saying?
No, I mean, what I'm getting to is that the Air Pollution Control District has no restriction on the city allowing for fireplaces and residential units.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Eggy. Lovretta Wheeler? Please come forward, um, give your name and, and your address, please. You can pull that microphone down, great.
Uh, Lovretta Wheeler. I live at eighteen fifty-one Anna Lane, which is, uh, J- and eighteen sixty-four Anna Lane, which is adjacent to the property in discussion. That's a low-density, uh, housing in there. Like, uh, mine is on a half-acre. And across the street, uh, which is mine, is, uh, one point seven eight acres, I believe. And, uh, five houses in there. It's just gonna be, uh, too much traffic. And I sold the, uh, them a right-of-way halfway up the street on my access road to the, to my rental on eighteen sixty-four Anna Lane. And all this extra traffic coming out of there and going down my street is going to, uh, impact it. And so I believe that that five houses is too, is too many to put there. And if you lived in a, uh, semi-rural country, countryside, and you liked it, you wouldn't want a bunch of houses put in your next door to you. So I'm against that many.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wheeler. Do we have any other people who would like to address the commission? If so, fill out a speaker slip, bring it up. If not, I'm looking for some, um, thoughts from the commissioners. Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you. Put the mic on this time. Um, Mr. Connolly, uh, since the density has been stressed by two speakers, could you comment on that compared with the density of the surrounding area?
Sure. This is probably the easiest thing to see. The city boundary really is the area within which we, the planning commission and the staff, have jurisdiction. The zoning defines when the land was incorporated into the city, what the agreed-to density would be. In this case, the site's zoned R1. So from the staff perspective, we look at, does it meet a minimum lot size in the R1 zone, which is ten thousand square feet or approximately four units to the acre? The surrounding zoning to the north and to the east, um, is within the county. They do have lower-density zoning. I believe it's half-acre minimum. But because it's outside the county's jurisdiction and inside the city's jurisdiction, different rules apply.
All right, thank you very much.
So both, uh, Ms. Wheeler and Ms. Eggy's, um, property are within the county?
So it would be, I guess if they could locate their properties on this map, that would help us define that. I can't, it's hard for me to see the actual addresses on the map here.
So it's county? Yeah. Yeah, those are in the county. Ms. Wheeler, you'll, you'll have to come to the mic?
My neighbor and I owned that property at one time and resold it to, uh, Alex and, uh, I forget the other name. But when we first sold it, they were supposed to bring the sewer all the way up to the cul-de-sac so that the county could, uh, um, easier have access to, uh, the city sewer. And I don't know what the, uh, plans are now for the sewer, but, uh, I would like for, uh, whatever they build there, I would like for them to keep their word on putting the sewer line all the way up to the cul-de-sac so it would be easier, easier for us to access.
It appears it's there. Thank you. Yeah.
I'm forwarded to Lot, um, Lot Two there in the corner. When, uh, the city had told, uh, the property owner who had been bringing in truckloads of, of soil, and the neighbors turned them in, and, um, he, and did not remove that soil. He spread it all, um, down on the bottom, so there used to be a basin where the natural water would flow. So down on the bottom of the hill where Lot Five is, there was actually, uh, where the water pooled up. And, uh, the guy didn't move it. He spread it all around, and he also spread it behind my Lot Two and Lot Three. And my lot, my lot that's up next to, uh, Lot Two has two drainages from there. I'm not very good at the directions, but one on the far side and then one on this side. Some of it was filled in where it had, um, there was, uh, like, uh, culverts or whatever where the water drained down. So just to let you know that on that, on that side, there is water drainage in two different places.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, so I'll, I'll just start some discussion on this for the planning commissioners. So the, the density proposed here is two-point-seven dwelling units breaker, could be up to five. So based on what's allowed here, it's a little over half of as dense as it could be. The, um... I, I'm in favor of the project. I guess I, I don't really have any problems with this. I don't have much to say about it. I, I can understand the neighbors' concerns. Um, glad to hear that they're on sewer, and we don't have to worry about, uh, any kind of leach-filled problems. Vacant properties are, I think, expected by most people to eventually be built out, especially in an infill project like this. It's, can't be expected to stay vacant forever. And you can't expect a developer to not maximize, uh, their dwelling units. So I like the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr., excuse me, Commissioner Carroll. Commissioner Rosler?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I agree with Commissioner Carroll. Um, the property to the, to the west of Anna Lane across, uh, from Lot A is R1, R1B, uh, a higher single-family density. Uh, this seems to be an appropriate transition between the commercial, uh, of, uh, to the south and to the, uh, low-density residential of the county, um, county property. All the urban services are being provided. The property to the north has the ability now to tap into the, uh, city sewer so that they can, uh, they can receive those additional services. So I'm, uh, I too am in favor of the project. I think it's appropriate and, uh, and, and, uh, it's pretty simple, straightforward.
Thank you, Mr. Rosler. I too think that the project is, um, i- is right for the area, and I will too also be supporting it. We're, we're, have moved on from public hearing. Thank you. Commissioners, does anybody wanna go forward with a motion? Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. Let's see, I just need to find the case number again. I'd like to make a motion to approve PC two-dash-one-zero-four as written with, uh, one minor addition, and that would be a clarification of the, um, some type of signage, uh, be installed for no parking on, along the proposed private street.
How about including the cultural resource monitoring?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Garrettson?
I would second the motion.
Commissioner Jackal? Okay, thank you. Shall we vote? Let the record show that the, the item passes unanimously. Thank you. At this time, um, we're gonna take a break, and we'd ask, can I ask the students to spread out between all the commissioners so we can sign your papers? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Mr. Conley, whenever you're ready.
So the intent of the discussion item tonight was to cover the general plan 2030. This is our general plan is our blueprint for growth in the future of the community. The last time we comprehensively updated our general plan before last year was in the mid-'80s. So we went through an extensive update process that ended in February of last year that adopted a new zoning and general plan map as well as a number of new goals and policies. At the time of that approval, the staff recommended that we come back every year or two and talk to the commission and the council about how well they think that document serves the community, if the goals in it are appropriate for the issues that the community's facing, if new things have come up that we feel like need to be addressed in the general plan. So looking at future growth and what, what issues we may face, that's obviously continuing, evolving themes. So this is the opportunity for us to get some feedback from the commission on things that may have come up in the last few years or things that they felt weren't maybe adequately addressed in the current plan and take that, those recommendations to the city council, after which we would come back and go through the process of providing formal recommendations on what we could or could not do. So I'm just going to generally cover the seven elements of the plan that we have or that we adopted and identify issues that the staff's aware of that have come to light. But of course, that doesn't limit the commission from bringing up any other issues or at least having an open discussion about what we think needs to be focused on. The first is the land use and community identity element. This is the primary element of the plan. It includes our land use map that establishes all of the allowable uses within the city on which our zoning is based. It establishes a number of policies related to growth and development that address everything from identity to smart growth to scenic preservation, preservation of wetlands and habitat, et cetera. Within the plan, there are a number of policies that currently address issues that we feel need to be revised. Those are primarily surrounding redevelopment, so this is the first issue. With the death of redevelopment last year, the plan never, basically was written in a time that we didn't envision the loss of redevelopment. And so some of our land use policies, some of our development goals and objectives are related to scenarios where we thought we would have more money from the redevelopment agency and be able to act as more of a developer and do more things within the community. And so we have to go back and revisit some of those as a result of the loss of redevelopment. Certainly, we have to modify the map that's in the plan and just pull out some of the policies that are in there to better reflect our future, but also think about how we intend to pursue the types of development we want in the post-redevelopment world. So that's the first issue. Second thing is bargain basement stores. We don't have any policies in the plan right now that address commercial uses or commercial uses that we want to further review, limit, establish more of. There's really not much of a discussion other than they should be good for the city. There has been a lot of focus on bargain basement stores, the first of which we had tonight. Actually, I think it's the second bargain basement store. Applications come before the planning commission, but we're getting a lot more applications for them. And there's a lot more interest in going in different locations, so it could be an issue that further faces the commission. So we're interested in their input on our current definition and how we're managing it and what we might do in the future. Another issue is commercial centers. We have a number of established commercial centers within the city. A number of those have been parceled and have either management associations that were established at the time they were developed or required by the city. There are also a number of older commercial centers that have de facto management groups, but they have either disbanded or they no longer operate and the city has no rules or regulations to really require that or establish that. And so we've seen some degradation of some of the commercial centers in town as a result of that split ownership. So I don't know that we can necessarily limit subdivision of those lands, but we can certainly be more enforceful about, or more forceful about CCNRs, management provisions in our general plan to talk about the desire to have those properties better managed in perpetuity. And the final issue under the land use element is the opportunity areas. When we adopted the plan, we adopted 10 opportunity areas. Those include a range of areas that are shown on the map. There are some specific policies in those areas that really get into trying to enhance certain portions of the city. The only one that we intend to address in the short term is the downtown-specific plan, which I believe is opportunity area two. And we'll be updating that plan in the next year as a result of a Sandag grant that we received. So we expect to come back and make some changes to that, but we'd be interested in any other changes or recommendations with respect to those areas. The circulation element is our transportation master plan. We generally include policies and goals as well as maps and designations for all of our roadways, bikeways, pedestrian facilities, trails, et cetera. The forthcoming changes that the staff foresees is that we've just recently initiated a bicycle master plan, which we'll be coming to the commission with. We'll have some community meetings. We're going to redo our whole bike network. The one that was adopted in the 2012 plan was very general. We would expect to provide much more enhanced policies and direction on how we intend to handle overlays and restriping and how to use what existing assets we have. And so we'll be focusing on that as part of the plan. We'd be interested in, in changing the policies to reflect that. We're also going to be reviewing parking policies. We've talked about that. I was hoping to bring that as more of a zoning review within this next fiscal year. It may be pushed out a little bit, but we'd be interested in the commission's direction on whether or not you'd like to see parking reviewed, changed, reduced in certain areas, those types of themes. With the remaining elements, we really don't envision much change or are recommending or have identified policies that affect those elements. Those include resource conservation and sustainability, which is largely the natural resources within the city and the management of those. The healthy vista element, which addresses public health and the provision of those services, public art. Most of those policies are generally new and we haven't seen really the need. We've had an extensive discussion with the council about smoking, but none of those policies have been inconsistent with what the council's decided on that issue, so we don't see a need to really make changes to that. Within the noise element, there is a matrix that's currently in there that identifies compatibility between different land uses and what recommended noise levels are. There's been some debate since we adopted it among some community members about whether it should be applied to existing uses or whether it should be applied to future development. The intent of it when we adopted it was apply it to future development applications to provide a tool to better review where those developments are going and whether it's an appropriate location. Because you really can't do a lot about that in current conditions, we're not recommending that it be applied to existing development, and so that'll be some more direction provided. Public safety facilities and services is all about public services. Again, we're not recommending any changes unless the commission has recommendations. And finally, the housing element, which was just adopted earlier this year because of all the hard work of Ms. Chow and her extensive negotiations with HCD to get it approved, we're not recommending any changes to that at this point either. And so that completes my staff presentation. I'm open to questions. Thank you.
How would you like this information provided to you?
We're really just looking this evening to have some discussion among the commission members if they have identified or see any of the themes that were within the staff report or presented tonight that they'd like to provide their input on. That would be helpful. If there are areas that they'd like to see addressed or understand how it's addressed in the general plan that's important to them as a community member, that would be helpful to hear. We'd really just like to hear from the commission to see if they're okay with the plan as is. That's fine too, but if there's areas that we think need updating or some focus or they agree with the staff recommendations, it would be good to know that tonight. We're just looking for comment. We're going to take it down and we'll come back to the commission with a written report that summarizes that.
Okay. Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman Kramer. Mr. Conley, on the bargain basement stores, was that requirement for special use permit, when that originated, was, I'm assuming the intent of that is just to give the city a little more control over the operation and maintenance of those types of facilities to make sure they don't get run down and don't bring the neighborhood down? Or was there, what were the specific goals of having those be specific use permits projects?
My recollection of that is that the council was interested in providing some stronger regulations and controls over those types of uses to not only control how they operate if they go in, but their actual location. If it's not an appropriate area, that we might have findings that would restrict them from, from putting a bargain store in a certain location.
As we don't, like, like it mentions here, or you mentioned, we, we don't really have any guidelines for, other than gut feel and neighbor feedback of locations or density of these operators. And, you know, like we do with the ABC 20 liquor licenses, you know, we have these zones and we have these maximum dense, maximum allowed in certain areas. And I think that's the biggest issue for most neighbors of, of one of these proposed places is that, hey, there's two of them right next door, why do we need a third? You know, I kind of like to see if it, if, if, you know, I like to see if it can be supported, let it be supported in the neighborhood. But I don't know what I'm asking. I guess is there, has there been any talk of setting up a little bit stiffer parameters for, for these?
Yes, there has. And we're interested in the commission's input on whether or not they support that, if they want to see them, some stronger restrictions or limitations or, you know, reviewing the issue and coming back with some more information about how many are in the city today and how we might control their establishment in the future. That's input that we would like to hear. We're ultimately going to come out of this process with a staff recommendation of some specific goals and policies and/or zoning provisions. And so if the commission supports that concept, then it would be good to know if the majority is behind that.
I think it would be helpful.
Yeah, I'm going the same way as Commissioner Carroll. I would like to see it almost the same way in a zoning thing because there's portions of the city that could probably afford having three bargain basements where other portions of the city, maybe one, maybe two would be the max that would be appropriate. So I would support that so that we can balance, better balance them out. Commissioner Fleming, do you have anything on bargain basements that we can?
I, I am a real big believer, just like with the mini breweries and things like that, at some point, we're going to have one too many and the free enterprise system is going to say, okay, that was one too many, now somebody's going to go out of business. And I think, I feel the same way about the bargain basement stores. At some point, there's one too many, but I don't think that's our choice to decide. I think that's the free enterprise. In my, in my opinion, that's, that's my stance on it. I believe that the, the free enterprise system will take care of that. That's my thought on it.
Commissioner Jackal, are you going to stay with the same subject?
Well, that was one of the things I was going to comment on and I'm, I'm in full agreement with Commissioner Carroll about that. I, I think that the, although it's not sort of in the same potential bad effect as, as the places that sell alcohol, I think the concept would be a good one to consider. I also wanted to say, I really would love the, some thought about how you, you deal with these multiple-owner shopping center things. We have a terrible time with, there are five owners of Shadow Ridge Plaza and it's impossible to get everybody together to do something. I talked to Kevin Hamm about that and he said, you know, the only thing he can do is try and find one buyer to buy the whole thing, which is probably never going to happen. It's very difficult. And I really would love if, if we'd review the parkingway requirements. I, I just keep holding up the Walmart parking area as being, you know, a moonscape and it seems as though you, in those days, you planned for the most busy day of the Christmas season and it's not like that all the rest of the year. So I'd love to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosler?
Thank you. I was going to suggest that we handle this issue by issue and see if, if the commissioners have, have additional comments. I, I agree with Commissioner Fleming about the market forces and the market determining how many or too many. I worry though about what happens when the market's saturated and somebody goes out of business, what happens to that space now? I really kind of struggled. It's retail sales and that's what the C1 zone is all about. I think it gets down to a quality issue, you know, are they selling? You know, are they selling junk or are they selling stuff that's necessary for the community?
I agree with that.
So I see it as a real struggle. And my concern is what happens when the market is saturated and people start going out of business? The other thought is that they're not all owned by one person or a group or that there's multiple ownerships and competition amongst the, amongst those stores. So how you put all that in the general plan and the zoning ordinance, I'm not really sure. So, but those are my concerns.
Thank you. Any more comments, Commissioner Phil, on, still on?
Yes, on that same thing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, along that same line, I agree with that. What you were just saying about the, I just lost my train of thought. Let's see, what was?
Bargain basement?
Bargain basement, yeah. I think the problem that we've got there is I believe the economic situation would take care of it. However, I agree with you that there needs to be some guideline on what is a bargain basement store and what is a junk store. You know, a store that just carries nothing but Halloween trinkets and, you know, the little grab bags and things like that is different from a store that sells discounted breads and discounted, you know, different things that, you know, a person who is in a strapped financial situation could use that store. I mean, so there's a difference. So I think what is actually sold makes a big difference, you know, in this respect. So, and we're still on that just one subject? Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Valdez or Garrettson, any comments? Okay. How about if we move to the multiple ownership? Commissioner Carroll?
Oh, I just wanted to say that that's an interesting idea you touched on is some kind of possible tie to the, some percentage of the items being sold that being considered necessity type items as opposed to ancillary items. So that's an interesting concept, you know? I think that maybe is worth thinking about.
Mr. Stone is pondering how he's going to write this thing right now. No, we're considering some possible changes in terms of the current policy because it's basically a definition of a use and a special use permit requirement that follows our normal standards. So we feel like there is some room for some additional considerations in how we review those. But we generally wanted to make sure that the commission was behind that idea before we take it to the council and go down, further down that road.
Commissioner Rosler?
Moving on to the multiple ownership?
Thank you.
Okay. I agree with the concern of staff that splitting up the older commercial parcels into individual ownerships is a concern. When I first came onto the commission, one of the first things we had was the service station on the corner in Melrose and Hacienda, and they were asking for beer and wine sales. And you were after them to increase their landscaping. And the more I thought about that, and the more, every time I drive past that site, Commissioner Jackal was right. You know, they should have increased their landscaping. So I think building complexes, they all share parking probably. They probably all share landscaping. They, if they were approved together, they need to hang together in their maintenance. And so I would, I'd strongly support that.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the multiple ownership? All right, moving on. Any comments? On, where are we? Opportunity areas? Commissioner Rosler?
I've thought about all of these, so I have comments on just about all of them. So the thing that I would like to know about the opportunity areas is the approval process they go through. And I would, my experience, one of the biggest things that hangs projects up is the environmental review. And if the environmental review can be done to a significant enough level that it's covered and you can, you can do a neg deck or there's existing approval, no, what is it?
Exemption.
Exemption, if it's exempt, that that would speed up the approval process. Now, I don't know if you can provide that much detail in the opportunity areas, but I think that that would be something to consider. The other thing is pre-approval commitments. I know in some of the other cities that I've worked in that the redevelopment staff would drive the planning staff just absolutely nuts by agreeing to things that weren't consistent with the plan or with zoning. And then the planners were in an awkward position because what the redevelopment staff had agreed to wasn't consistent with all the approvals or with the documents. So just a comment, you're small, and so I understand. But that, that's, those were my comments on the opportunity areas.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fleming, are you on opportunity areas? Okay. All right. Bicycle facilities. Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you. This probably has nothing whatsoever to do with what you're proposing to think about, but my husband rides a bike often and what drives him totally nuts is that our traffic signals don't recognize him. He has to wait for a car to come by to change the signal, so.
Good comment, yeah. That's something that we're going to consider in the bike plan is loops for bicycles at, in areas where the routes are designated on the plan.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Rosler?
Do we in our office, commercial industrial uses, require shower and locker facilities for employees that bike to work?
We do not have any such provision.
I would suggest, that's a big hindrance to people biking to work. And if, I know it's expensive to add those facilities to a bathroom or restroom, but I think it's a hindrance to people biking to work and we could facilitate that.
Thank you. Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes, I would definitely like to see more information once this consultant has come back with the bicycle circulation plan. How long will that take?
So we expect to have a rotation of community meetings here in the next couple of months and then we'll have some draft policy issues to consider. And that's when we expect to come to the planning commission and the traffic commission and present the plan, the concept, the issues at hand.
That'll be just on the roads? That won't be trails, off-road biking or?
It addresses Class 1, which is off-street facilities, but we really only have one Class 1 facility and that's the inland rail trail that's proposed along our railway.
But no addressing?
But not trails or pedestrian facilities that are not designated bike facilities, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else want to weigh in on bicycles? Okay, moving on, parking? Commissioner Rosler?
We need to take a look at the large box parking standards and also their driveway standards. The parking lot at Target drives me nuts. I think I understand why it was done that way and the requirements of Target and the other large users to have a parking field out in front of their store that's not interrupted. But I think that's something that we need to look at and think about.
Thank you. Commissioner Valdez?
Yeah, I had a question on the parking at transit centers. Are you going to be addressing those issues?
So parking on the transit center site, so most of those are properties that are owned and developed by North County Transit District. And as a separate district, they get to abide by their own land use regulations. So they typically don't go through our development review process when they develop those stations. They share the plans with us. They show us what they're going to put there, but we don't get to tell them or put them through a site plan approval that, you know, expressly identifies permissible parking. With respect to parking within the transit districts in terms of private development around the stations, one of the issues that we're going to be addressing in the downtown specific plan update is whether or not we want to reduce those standards for developments within a certain distance of the transit center or that share certain characteristics, like they're on a major bus route and they, you know, provide pedestrian facilities to accommodate transit, et cetera. So there will be some criteria, that's the intent, to allow for reductions in parking.
So then, so do they have to apply with Sandag to get their parking approved?
They have recommended standards that we're going to be bringing to the commission and the council and we'll be making a staff recommendation of what we would like to see. And it'll be up to the council ultimately to establish a new standard. Right now, the staff's position is that our parking standards are fairly high for mixed-use urban development that we're trying to promote in the downtown area. And so we really need to change that if we want to incentivize development in that area. There are though, a number of concerns within the community about the adequacy of parking within those areas too, so that's going to be a conversation that we're going to have to have. When we do evaluate the parking standards, we'll come back with some specific studies that looks at what's out there and we'll get some recommendations from some consultants about how we can better manage that and that'll be part of the discussion.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Fleming?
Yeah, I'd like to, as far as the parking is concerned, I'd like to see you take a closer look at possibly the enforcement of the two-hour parking standards downtown that we've got. I mean, we've, it's, we've got signs up everywhere that says two hours, but we need to enforce it in some way because a lot of the businesses, the people that work in the businesses park out in the front, right in front of stores, you know? I'm blessed to have a little parking lot behind me, you know, that people can pull into my shop. So it's, it helps a lot in that respect. But there's a lot of these places that, you know, and you talk to the owners and they don't listen. But if there was, if we could get some kind of enforcement, that's, that would be, that's my concern, right? Biggest concern.
I can let code know that concern was expressed at the meeting tonight. It's not so much a general plan issue, but certainly something that we can bring to the enforcement staff.
I would think that would be the, VVBA would?
We've talked about that for years and we've just never been able to, well, the comment has always been that we can't afford the code enforcement people to do it. You know, that's what I've all, I've heard for years. And I don't understand that concept. I mean, if you're, if you're given tickets, you ought to be getting money packs.
I can find out and let you know.
It doesn't make sense to me, so.
Commissioner Rosler? Commissioner Carroll?
Oh, thank you, Chairman Kramer. I just wanted to agree with the, what a help the studies would be for the parking when you're wanting to change the parking standards to these lower thresholds in the higher density areas. If we had some specific examples of other cities and what they're doing and if it's working or not working, that would help me a lot with getting on board with lowering those standards in those areas because I'm, I'm always kind of butting up against that parking issue where I think, I don't believe that those people aren't going to have two cars or more cars. It's hard for me to picture a lot of these families not having those additional cars and needing a place for them. So if there's something out there in other cities that's working, shown to be working, then that would help me get on board with it. There's a, I agree with the big box stuff. Yeah, that's, there's, that's, seems fairly obvious, but I'm, I'll need some help getting over the hurdle on the higher density stuff.
Any other comments on the general plan? Commissioner Rosler?
We're going on to the other elements then? Okay, on the noise element, concern was raised tonight by the lady that was adjacent to the subdivision about the noise of the Sprinter. I know other jurisdictions are looking at quiet zones for the Sprinter. Have, have we thought of that or addressed that issue at all?
We currently have a policy in the general plan that recommends establishing quiet zones at the Sprinter station or Sprinter stops, crossings, sorry. It's just a funding issue at this point.
Okay, all right. And then the other issue kind of out of, well, under public safety, we list natural hazards as one of the issues. In our neighborhood up on Warmlands and Foothill, in the creek beds up there, we have a lot of castor beans that are growing. And I believe castor beans are the source of sarin poison. And there's no part of that plant, from what I understand, that's not poisonous. And so I was just curious, is there any policies in the general plan that would help the city eradicate those poisonous plants?
We have a number of policies that restrict invasive species, which that's considered to be. Primarily applies to new development growth, you know, that's going to occur. So no new projects can go in that allow for that to occur. The removal of it and the eradication of it is more a stormwater issue because our stormwater department tries to clean up the creeks and deal with the invasives issue. So they apply for grant funding and they apply for different types of funding to try to do that. There are policies in there that support the eradication of invasives within the creek too. It's just a funding issue.
Commissioner Garrettson?
There it is. John, I'd like to address the noise issue in a general sense relative to McClellan Airport. And, and I know there are regulations beyond the city that control a lot of that, but is there anything we can do to prevent, let's say, a future airline going in there and tripling, doubling the number of flights that go in there? And are there restrictions in terms of their approach the city of Vista can have an impact on? You know, altitude, how far around the tower they have to go or whatever?
We can certainly have input in that process, but it's not in any way under our control. The county airport authority regulates the airport operation. The FAA has rules and regulations about the approach requirements. They updated their airport plan about five years ago. They brought the cities in, they informed us of what they were doing, they had some public hearings. Our general plan currently reflects what those maximums and minimums are. And we generally just have land use policies that restrict development that would affect those. But as far as having any input into further or limiting what's been allowed, you know, it's really just about being involved in the process and providing comment from the city side. We don't have much of a policy enforcement, you know?
If we had a strong policy, would it have any impact?
You want my personal opinion on that? I don't think so. But it certainly wouldn't hurt if that was the consensus of the commission and the council, so.
I just think it has the potential for everybody in South Vista to be negatively impacted.
It's certainly something we can look at and come back. And I can give you more input on what's in there now and how it was developed.
Commissioner Valdez?
Just following up on that other comment on the creek beds. Under the public safety, is there anything addressing wildlife? Because I know there's quite a few coyotes running through different areas of?
There are a number of policies addressing the protection of wildlife and going through environmental review and making sure that those corridors are maintained and that there's setbacks from those corridors when new development occurs. Most of the issue in Vista is a result of bad decisions made a long time ago in terms of what's been allowed to encroach into the creek. We have pretty good policies in there now that establish a buffer. But trying to deal with existing uses is more the concern, you know, from the city side. As far as protection of the wildlife that's within those corridors, that's, there are very general policies in there right now. Most of that is just really done through the preservation of those areas through open space designations.
Okay, I see no lights. How about if we move on to commission sta- How about if we move on to commission, staff discussion, council, actions, and reports?
Just to let the commission know on this last issue, as I said upfront, we'll prepare a staff report to the council and share some of the comments that we got tonight with the council. Try to get some input from them on these issues and any other general plan concerns they have. And then we'll come back through the rotation of the Planning Commission and the council with some formal recommendations about what we'd like to change so that it can all be in the record.
Perfect.
Staff reports, anything you wanna report on, Patsy?
We may actually not have a meeting in October unless a item that John's been working on related to a rezone of a few properties up on, if it comes back. So if that doesn't come back, we actually may not have a meeting until November, which maybe end up being pretty close to Thanksgiving. It's kind of hard to believe to say that, it's like, wow. But anyways, it may be around that time, so I just want to play.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, comments from the community development director, city planner, assistant city attorney? Nope. Reports, comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Fleming?
Just real quickly, since we were talking, discussing parking, that G8 project that we've worked on for fifteen or twenty years on the corner there, did, have they ever come back with any, because we discussed the parking at the time, that's what kinda put the kibosh on it, but?
They're still at it.
Make some adjustments.
They're still working on trying to provide a design that accommodates parking. They're looking at off-site parking and some improvements to accommodate that. Patsy's working on that, she can give you an update.
Yeah, we actually received a recent medal on their proposed parking structure off-site across Indiana. And the plan is to make sure that our preliminary comments from staff have been addressed in this most recent iteration. My plan, or at least my goal as I talked to the applicant, is to take it to the downtown business owners through Vista Village Business Association, start at the design review committee because they've been asking a lot about it. And so I thought it'd be nice to take it there, allow the business owners to come to the meeting, and therefore provide their input, concerns, comments, et cetera. And we'll go from there, and hopefully we'll be coming back here to the planning commission after that.
Did they get an architect yet, or?
The same team is involved as it was last time.
Okay. Commissioner Carroll?
Oh, I don't have anything, I changed my mind.
Anybody else? Thank you very much, have a great evening, we're adjourned.